Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay, now's the chance for people to speak on items not on the agenda. I have a request from someone to speak on item E, which is the items to be added or deleted. I think you'd rather make a general statement. Mr. Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Two items I'd like to present to you tonight. One, I think Lieutenant needs a big thank you. She has brought of all the Inland Empire cities, Loma Linda, to be number three in crime reduction in this area. And that was in the paper, I believe it was about a month ago, last meeting you had the workshop, so didn't bring it up there, but job well done. I'm glad to see at least we're down, you know, over some of the others, including San Bernardino. So, I mean, you get a bigger city against a smaller one, and we're in the fight for that. The other thing is, I don't know if this fits with your sign item you're gonna bring up tonight or different. That's why I put it now. I have noticed that we have people that will drop signs off Friday night, Saturday morning, and they will pick them up Monday morning, basically when coenforcement's not here. And they're not permanent signs, but they're established so that they can be put down and picked up real quick. One of them's down here by the Arco Station. And as I say, it shows up and it disappears. So whether this can be put under any temporary signs, or you've also got cars that will park there, or various other places on lots that I'm sure are not theirs, they don't own the lot, and, you know, if you want a nice look in town, this is one way to say, either you have a place to put them, if you're gonna sell a car or have signs, this is where it's done. Because otherwise, somebody's gonna do one here, somebody'll do one there. Next thing you know, we're gonna have a ugly-looking town. It's not quite like you'll see during election time, because they get posted anywhere, but I'm not thinking of our own city, but when you get countywide things going, they'll tackle wherever they can find a place to put it. And this is something that, as I say, whether you can consider with mobile signs or ask to be another issue, it's something to, I think, look at.
Okay, we'll deal with conflict of interest issues as they arise. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to make a statement on any item not on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, and we'll proceed to item number four.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to address the council. Just as a point of order, unless something's wrong with my eyes or you're playing tricks on me, Councilman Duper and Daly should switch signs, otherwise I'm very confused as to who I'm speaking to. That helps so much. It's a pleasure to have a chance to talk to you. Several weeks ago, I was asked to serve on the Board of Inland Temporary Homes, and upon attending the first board meeting, it became clear to me that one of the challenges the organization faced was that of having accurate financial statements. It is an organization that has done, and I've only been familiar with it for a brief period of time, but an organization, as I've looked at the history, has done a tremendous amount of good in this community for homeless people and those that are challenged financially to seek temporary housing. Unfortunately, the way the system works, as it's been described to me by previous board members and current board members, is the federal and state governments do a wonderful job of providing funding for individuals with rent assistance and other specific grant items. Unfortunately, the people who write these policies don't allocate dollars for the actual administration of an organization that takes these funds and distributes them to the members of the community. So in the current scenario, the organization finds itself with sufficient dollars to fund rental assistance and housing assistance to individuals, but no dollars allocated to actually pay for the cost of administrating a program like that. That presents an enormous challenge to the organization in that in these times, it's left with relying upon philanthropy in the community to help pay for the organizational and administrative costs of the organization. The pressing need of inland temporary homes is to find sufficient cash, which they do not have, to pay for an audited financial statement to tell them how much cash they do not have. And one of the real challenges with that is you cannot apply for federal grant funding and state grant funding unless you can submit an audited financial statement. So it's sort of, you're in this vicious cycle of you don't have enough dollars to pay for an audited financial statement, but without an audited financial statement, you can't apply for ongoing grant funding for the people that you're trying desperately to keep off the street. So I met several days ago with our city manager and with our mayor, and simply made the proposal that the organization, Inland Temporary Homes, is in desperate need of funds to pay for an audited financial statement. They do not have sufficient dollars at this point in time to actually pay for the cost of the audited financial statement in order to tell them where they stand financially. It's impossible at this point to give you a perspective on what the financial status of that organization is and whether it's even viable or not. I can't answer that question because I don't have current financial information. So my short pitch is to use funds that, I think they are IVDA funds, CDPG, thank you.
Block grants.
I'm sorry?
Community development block grants.
Thank you. That would be available, as I understand it, after July the first for the new fiscal year. That would be granted in an unrestricted grant to be used by Inland Temporary Homes to pay for direct costs to obtain the 2010 audited financial statement. After that, if the council wishes, I'd be happy to come back and report on what the findings of that, of the financial status of the organization is once we have the ability to do that. But the pitch is simple. We need dollars unrestricted to pay for that, and that's, at this point in time, the next immediate step that we have to determine whether there's financial viability for the organization.
We normally wouldn't get involved in dealing with nonprofits, but in this particular case, we've actually been giving a fair amount of money to it every year for, gosh, a number of years. Do we have an estimate as to what is the cost of an audit?
The last quote we had was between $5,000 and $6,000 to complete the 2010 audit. Candidly, we don't have first quarter financials with a balance sheet and income statement and a profit and loss for, on a monthly basis. So if I can at least get through the 2010 audit, that gives us a closeout for year end, and I can hopefully work with them to negotiate at least giving us first quarter financials for 2011, so we see where we stand at this point in time. But that's the best estimate I have, is $5,000 to $6,000 for the audited financials for 2010.
So if, help me understand this, were they doing audits in the past?
Yes.
Or is this, I see, so this is just the first time?
Yes, they're just behind. They simply don't have cash flow to pay for their audits. Candidly, they've had to work very hard to scrape together the dollars to complete the 2009 audit, which I expect to have momentarily, but that doesn't cover 2010.
I see. Can I add, I had a question for Jarb. We gave them some CBG money this last year. Was it like $10,000? Okay, so you anticipate that we'll have another $10,000 available after July, is that what you're thinking?
Go ahead and explain that.
Okay. Last February, February 22nd, where we allocate the CDPG grant funding for next fiscal year, the city council did approve $10,000 for inland temporary home. And at that time, in addition to inland temporary home, we also gave $10,000 to the library and $6,000 to Boys and Girl Club, in anticipation that we'll get additional $4,000 from some other city, because the county required $10,000 minimum. Since then, we received a phone call from the county CDPG saying that the Boys and Girl Club did not get additional $4,000. So the $6,000 that we allocated for them will come back to the city for the city capital improvement project. And so, because we, in addition, we have a, we have a, the CDPG, we have the grant for $131,938, of which 15% of that can be used for this type of funding. So the remaining is still for City of Loma Linda Public Works Project. So my question is, I can call, I can be, I have been contacting the county, but has not been responded back yet. My direction, or I'd like to recommend, not direction, my recommendation to the council is maybe we can ask the county that we can use the remaining $6,000 to give that to inland temporary home, in addition to the $10,000 we already gave it to them. Now, but I don't know the, if they can use that for administration or not, that's something I can't answer, because this is the HUD grant, it's a federal fund, that HUD gave it to the county, and the county divvied up to the city.
Right.
And that is a rule that maybe inland temporary home know, but I do not know.
I don't know off the top of my head. That's the key challenge we face. The federal and state governments grant matching dollars and rent assistance dollars, and that's great to assist the person who needs that at the time, but there are precious few dollars that are usable out of those funds for administration. So you can help these individuals with direct rent assistance, but there's no dollars to actually pay for the cost of administrating the organization. Currently, our executive director, who is resigning, probably effective in June here, has taken half of her salary, which is an extraordinarily modest salary to begin with. She's taken half of it just to allow additional funds to be used for trying to pay ongoing obligations. Nevertheless, it's kind of where we're at, and if those funds aren't usable unrestricted for an audit, we would have a problem, because that's directly where I want to see the dollars go, is to pay for an audited financial statement. We simply can't move forward applying for federal grant dollars without an audited financial.
But as we all know, funds are fungible. I'm sure there'd be some way to...
Well, the challenge we have with federal and state grant dollars is they can't be used for purposes other than that specifically granted. And in private foundations, many times they will grant dollars for specific purposes, but not to be used for administration.
So there is no other money to fungible, to...
Now, we, as, at this point in time, I don't see other dollars within the organization to transfer, to use for just straight administrative expenses, like insurance, like salaries, like paying for an audited financial. But my view was, we had to first get financial statements in order so we had a clear picture of where we stood, closeout of 2010, and at least first quarter of 2011, to try to have a picture of where the organization actually sits. Candidly, I don't know that it's financially viable, but I won't be able to answer that question until we have actual financial information.
Couple of questions. First, I'm, I've been involved with grants, but not the type of grant that you're talking about. I'm a little stunned that grants to support these kinds of organizations would not permit inclusion of some kind of administrative costs, because clearly those are embedded in how you run an organization like this.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of a new concept to me. Can, can you give us, we don't have a copy of the budget for this facility, can you give me some sense of things like how much, what proportion of the budget comes from state or regional grants versus fundraising and any other sources that you might have?
Great question. I wish I had clear information to give you. What has been represented to me is approximately, the budget is annually approximately 1.4 million, of which by far the lion's share is federal and state grant dollars that go directly to rental assistance to homeless and those who meet the income qualification guidelines. What I've been told, but have not yet verified, is less than 1% of those dollars can be used for administration. There's also funding that comes from private foundations, several of which they have ongoing, but those funds have been earmarked specifically to help homeless directly, not for administrative costs. So therein lies the issue that they face, and until we actually can get a closeout of 2010, as I said, and first quarter 2011, I have no sense of exactly where we stand financially. I would be happy to present that information to the, to the council once we obtained it. I would be happy for there to be a proviso that says the information needs to be submitted back to the council, so you can see at least, if this were approved and we could use the dollars, you could see the year-end audited financials and the best we can do for first quarter, and that would give us a much clearer picture of where we stand financially.
Of course, the context that we're, we're sitting in right now is tough. I mean, this council's been dealing with some very, very tough budget issues within the city for ourselves.
Of course.
My question is, what, where's the board at with all of this? Because if I'm understanding you correctly, and I mean this in all due respect, but it sounds like this isn't a new problem. This has been a problem that has been evolving year after year for a while. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
So what is the role of the, how does the board perceive their role in addressing this?
Exactly the questions I have asked. I've now attended two meetings, and those were the first questions I asked. Where did we, how did we get where we are? And I don't have a clear picture of that. And bottom line is, there's been virtually a complete changeover in much of the board, so there are relatively, certainly the majority of the board at this point in time is new, doesn't have that type of history. Those are the kinds of questions I've asked from day one and simply don't have answers at this point. This is not a persuasive, I'm sorry.
No, I understand. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're basically saying, we've hit the restart button now, but we need some help to assess the viability of the mission of this organization.
That's right. I know they borrowed money to pay for operations. The worst possible thing you can do is borrow money to pay for operations. So candidly, I simply don't know if it's a viable organization. Once you have audited financials and a financial statement for first quarter, you can begin to answer that question, but I simply can't answer it at this point.
I guess the last question I have is, can you give me some sense for how much of a homeless problem we have in the city of Loma Linda? What is the need that Inland Homes is addressing?
They operate a number of different facilities. The administration has represented that they are operating at full capacity. I can't tell you exactly how many beds that is, but they are operating with no open capacity at this point in time. There is a waiting list, as I understand it, for that which is available. As you might well imagine, in the current economic times we face, these are the individuals that are pretty much hit the hardest.
Because I, you have a sympathetic ear in me. I'd like to see his help for, I mean, to address the people that have, have clear needs, that are trying to do what they can to improve their own lot and life. I'm supportive of those kinds of things. And I know that Inland Homes does some fundraising, because I've received mailers in the past for this. So I'm supportive, but I want, you know, I want to be sure that your board understands that you're addressing the city at a time when we're struggling with some of our own financial challenges.
Right.
And obviously, we're gonna need to take direction from our city manager in terms of what funding may be available for us to even spend on this. But certainly, speaking for myself, and I assume other members of the council, we're supportive of this kind of activity. I mean, service, if, if the city of Loma Linda doesn't reach out, provide service to needy people, then I'm not sure what city would.
I appreciate that. Obviously, the challenge we face is, the first order of business for the board would be, what fundraising, private philanthropy can we go to? The challenge with that, and I have certainly made this point, is it's very difficult to ask people to give money when you can't answer the question whether it's a viable organization. I simply don't feel in good conscience that you can go and ask for substantial private philanthropy when you can't present to them, here is our financial statement, here's where we stand, we are a viable organization. So it's kind of a chicken and egg problem that we face right now.
I have a little bit of perspective on their mission. I attended last year their annual Christmas dinner, and they were on the verge of not having a Christmas dinner, which is essentially their reunion of the families that they've helped in the past. And they got a last-minute donation from the Loma Linda University Church to provide that meal. And the perspective I got from Leanne, their executive director, is that this is not an organization that has a mission of helping individuals who are homeless. They have, their mission is to help families that are homeless.
Right.
So they're family units with children, mother and a father, or if there's not two parents, at least their children involved. And those types of homeless units tend to be more tied to geography. So they're actually our neighbors. They're not just people coming in from cold states during the, during the wintertime and wintering in, in sunny Southern California, and we're not just attracting an endless supply of itinerant homeless with inland temporary home services. We're actually providing a service to people who live in this area. So to me, that's a little bit more compelling than, than to be just, you know, like some towns create massive homeless shelters and just draw people from other communities and then relieve other communities of their responsibilities. But I have a question, and I don't know if you can answer it. It's called inland temporary homes, it's not called Loma Linda temporary homes. What are you doing to go to other communities for assistance?
We're going to address Redlands, we're also going to address San Bernardino, city of San Bernardino. To the extent I can make contact with other cities, we would do that. How far the sphere of influence goes, I actually can't answer, but certainly Redlands and San Bernardino are the logical next steps for this, to see if we can obtain some assistance from them as well. But I'm very mindful of the fact that it's not a very persuasive argument to come and ask somebody for money, because I don't know what condition the organization is in.
Just, just so I know, my, my lack of experience in financial matters, what, what would it cost? What's the estimate on a cost to get that, that study done?
$5,000 to $6,000. But the closest financial information I have right now is the closeout of 2009 showed that the organization was effectively upside-down, $200,000. I don't know what 2010 will show. So if it's progressively gotten worse, the obvious question that any board member will ask is, what's the plan to turn this around? What's the plan to pay off existing outstanding loans? And the obvious answer will be, well, philanthropy will ask people to give. This is a very worthy organization, but you, again, it's this chicken and egg problem that you have to be able to answer people's legitimate questions before you can appropriately ask them for money. But the short answer is $5,000 to $6,000 for audited financials to end out 2010, closeout that year. I may be able to ask them, would you just please then, once you've closed out 2010, how much more to simply finish out the first quarter or first four months, we're approaching five months, but if I could get four months of 2011, we'd have a pretty sharp picture of where we stand.
Can, can we get at least some kind of a public airing of how much we have invested in this organization already?
Every year, we...
Not just the $10,000 a year we've been giving, but there was, we bought out some covenants. Can you explain that? So this, there's a, we have more at stake here than just losing homeless services.
When Inland Temporary Homes was planning to relocate its shelter and some of the transitional housing to a five-plex on Poplar Street, the redevelopment agency contributed $400,000 in return for long-term affordability covenants, which is 55 years on rental units, for the, for the housing of basically very low and low-income families. So we have $400,000 into that just for, for, for the building itself. I understand that the building itself is owned outright by Inland Temporary Homes. So it's mainly the operations at this point that they need assistance with.
It's my understanding, though, that you hold effectively, for lack of a better term, a mortgage that would secure that indebtedness, but again, it's a function of the ability to make it a viable organization.
It is repayable at some point.
Well, I need a direction from the city council. You want me to go talk to the county CDPG and your approval to reallocate that $6,000 that, that Boys and Girl Club can use and move it toward the inland temporary home. I just need your direction, so I can move forward.
Assuming it's allowed to do it.
I think we have to find that question out first. I think it needs to ask before we can even discuss.
But I think we can, I think we can, we can say, assuming that it is allow, allowable, we would grant the permission to do it.
Or allow it to use it for non-unconditional use.
We would stipulate that we will only use it for that which we are required to do in order to get federal and state grant funding.
Okay. If, if the council give me that direction, I will, I will do that and report back to you in the next city council meeting.
Yeah, I think it's important, as, as difficult as it might be that we may have to spend $6,000 more, which is not really our money, it's money we get from the feds, but I think it's important for us to understand exactly where this organization is going, because we've been funding it for quite a long time, and we've kind of been taking it by faith that they've been doing a decent job, because we've been doing it every year. But I think in the past, it behooves us that we should have probably looked at some of their financial statements prior to just giving money to them every year. So it's important that we now kind of look more into it, and if it costs us more money, I think that's a good, good idea.
Can I make a suggestion that not only you speaking with the, the other local cities, but Mayor Riggsby mentioned you, at some point, the organization had, had received some money from local churches? Maybe that would be an option to maybe start doing some campaigning there, because that might be some...
We have asked, and will continue to ask. The response in most organizations is, we're really stretched, we're really in a struggle right now. So, but we will continue to do that.
So is there a motion?
I move it.
I'll second.
And, and in that context, I also want to compliment you and commend you, carry on being candid in addressing these issues. It gives me confidence that the board will move forward in a business-like way to be sure that we're not sinking money in something that inevitably is gonna fail, but hopefully we, we approach this also in a physically responsible way to make it viable. And as you say, that'll, that'll hopefully, and should entice more investors in the project. But I appreciate your candor.
You must have drawn the short straw.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, members of the council.
Thank you. Now we have item five, a joint public hearing of the city council and RDA pertaining to the sale of property and approving housing disposition agreement between some parties and the city and the agency. Mr. Redevelopment Chair, would you like to call?
We're convening the RDA.
Okay, then we will proceed.
I don't think these microphones are working much.
There's something coming out of them. When I tap on it, it gives some kind of a... Yeah, those of you out in the audience, good luck. It comes and goes. Okay, city clerk and madam secretary, it's your item.
This subject home is located within the, the Gardner tract off of Van Leuven Street. The redevelopment agency has interest as, with covenants on 35 of the 58 homes in there. We currently own this home, and we, there is a first-time home buyer that has applied and has qualified to purchase the home. The sales price is $153,000, and the new buyer has accepted that. And we are hoping this evening to get direction to proceed with the sale to provide a, a family with a home. They are currently renters in Moore Park, and he commutes every day to the motel store where he works in San Bernardino, so this would certainly save gas money. The current covenant on it is for 45 years, and that would, that would continue with the sale of this property. We anticipate being able to close escrow by July 1. So by adopting the agency resolution and then also the city council resolution, will authorize me to open escrow for the sale of this property.
Just a quick question. Is this one of the properties that we retook ownership over when the prior owner defaulted?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, this is, are there any other questions first? And then I'll open the public hearing. Okay, the public hearing is open. Anybody like to make a comment on this topic? Our two attendees are shaking their heads, so we'll close the public hearing. It's like Congress, big speeches, two people in the audience. Okay, is there anybody who would like to make a motion? Can we just take the two together, or do we have to?
I'll read them both.
I think you could. They're non-controversial, so you could include both in a single motion.
Okay.
Can I make a motion that we move Council Bill R-2011-18 and Redevelopment Agency Bill R-2011-04 to open escrow in the sale of this house?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Just a general comment. It's been brought to my attention that there are a number of homes in that neighborhood that are starting to kind of quote-unquote fall apart. And I know they're part of a association of some sort. They're not. Okay, which explains why they're falling apart. I'm hoping that none of those homes are the ones that we own. So hopefully, our code enforcement person is looking at that to ensure that our houses are upkept.
The homes that the agency owns, we do maintain them. We have Gardner that, that takes care of the exterior. We are responsive. Other neighbors will call me if there's a sprinkler that's going off. So we do maintain our homes. There are other homes however near that are in foreclosure that are market homes that we do not have an interest in. There are several.
Is the Gardner we use the one they named the tract after?
No.
Okay. Just wondering. Okay, is there any other comment? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it passes. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number six, public hearing prohibiting mobile billboard advertising displays. This is the second reading. Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, the item before you for a public hearing is a city ordinance that would prohibit mobile billboard advertising displays on the public streets. This is pursuant to new state legislation. I don't really have anything to add to the report or that we haven't discussed previously, but this will give us a tool to remove these trailers that are parked with signs on the streets. It would require a warning notice, or in the alternative, we can post signs about the city to prohibit this type of parking. So the, the proposed action is to approve the ordinance on second reading, waive reading, read by number and title only, and roll call vote.
Does this ordinance address the type of signing that was addressed in the earlier comments?
I don't believe so. This, this applies to trailers that have a sign affixed and that are parked on the street.
And, and do we, I, I, I'm supportive of this, but do we have a problem that we're trying to address here?
The, the problem is on our borders.
No, it's one on Redlands Boulevard. It's in, in the city.
But I, that was, that's in our city? Because last I heard, it was down at the BNC.
Yeah, on Redlands Boulevard, west of Anderson, on the eastbound. Yes.
And it's parked on Redlands Boulevard?
Yes, on the eastbound Redlands Boulevard, west of Anderson. And there's one in the city of Redlands, but it's on Barton Road, right here, just east of San Mateo Canyon Road, on the westbound, on Barton.
And what are they advertising? A business or services or?
Something for $19.99. I can't remember what it is.
I believe it's a alarm company.
I move the ordinance.
I'd like, like to make a comment on it real quick.
You move it pursuant to his, his suggestions, which, which is waive reading of the entire ordinance by number and title only and establish a roll call.
That's exactly the way I was going to say it, if I wasn't jet-lagged.
Oh, yes. We need a public, did we do a public hearing last time, or is this the public hearing?
This is the public hearing.
Okay, are they allowed to move it before we do the public hearing? I don't think so.
I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Okay, the public hearing is open.
That's why the mayor part time is here.
Do our two attendees have any comment? Yes, we have one comment.
So you want participation. I have seen it, and if I recall right, the one that you were referring to down here by the Estancia, east of San Mateo, when I saw it the other day, I think there were a whole bunch of little blue, they're probably violation stickers or papers put on it because, you know, you could see these things. I think there was two or three levels by six wide. So Redlands probably tagged them, but I've seen these all over the place. And they bring them and drop them.
Sounds like they're proud of them.
The only one that I have seen that is different is down on Redlands Boulevard, but it's on the back of a car. It's at the company where they work. And it's one of those, I think, that's inside so that you don't see what it is. And it's probably so that people would notify or notice what it is and where they're looking for it. But that's a business in town. This other one, I don't know if it's a business in town or not, but, you know, if you're going to do it, put it in front of your business. Don't put it in front of where you want to drop it.
There was an article in the paper last week about this with some quotes from some of us on the council and from some of our city employees, and quotes from a company that's mainly affected appears by this. What I find interesting is that company is not here this evening to represent their opinion or side. And I, I think I would have appreciated that input from them if that was that important.
Mr. Mayor, just add, this ordinance is not directed at any particular company or any particular sign content. It's a generic ordinance that would apply to any similar violation. I would also add that there may be other vehicle code or parking code violations such as parking in a single spot over 72 hours or without the required blocks on a trailer and so forth. So this is just one more tool in our code enforcement quiver that may or may not be effective in the future in a particular situation.
Okay, I can ask the voluminous audience, is there any further comment during the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And now we can proceed to further discussion or a motion. Go ahead.
I move Council Bill Number 0-2011-08 as presented.
And I'll second that.
It looks like six. You're on the wrong page. Two, that's zero six, yeah. Okay, and that's the embedded motion using Mr. Holdaway's language. I have one further question. I noticed that it has dollar fines. What is our right to tow said trailer under either current law or this proposed ordinance?
Well-
Impound.
Yes, we do have the right to, to tow the vehicle. A trailer is a vehicle. And that's separate from the fine. So there could be towing and impound charges in addition to any fine that might, may apply. And we can do that under existing ordinances depending upon the violation.
So the fact that it states in Section 2 penalties that are dollar amounts implies that there's a towing option, or is that just general law?
That, that's just the general penalty provision.
Okay. Okay, good. That answers my question. Any other comments, questions? Okay, then I think we proceed to a roll call. The buttons.
Is it having ordinance with city council? Is there any other? 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 Is there any other?
Thank you very much.
I had a question. I didn't want to take up too much time, but I'm just curious. Is there any legal issues with us that, for the sake of argument, assuming we allowed this, to actually charge a rental fee for using city streets to advertise? Are we even allowed to do that?
No.
All right.
Okay, then we'll proceed to the consent calendar. And why don't we take care of 7.1 first? And I've suggested in the past, and I don't know why we don't do it, but we probably should separate that out because it's not part of the consent calendar. It always has to be treated separately, so can we just make it a separate item? And I will back away, and Councilman Brower is not here, so do we have, I guess we have the same issues, and I'm just out of the discussion.
Do I have a motion to pass item 7.1?
So moved.
I second.
Hearing the opposition is passed. You can control the cattle.
Okay, is there a motion on the balance of the consent calendar?
And I'll move that as well. With a comment, and that is there, I want the public to know that there are some comprehensive reports included in the consent calendar that I've spent a little time with that are very, very well done and enlightening, and I'm impressed with the detail and quality of work. And so I, I appreciate all of the effort that goes into generating these reports, and I want that noted.
I appreciate the pun as well. An enlightening light benefit assessment district report. Thank you. It's very maintaining, too. Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the consent calendar is passed. We move to new business. Public Works has item 16, presentation of a five-year capital improvement program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year, Public Works prepares a five-year capital improvement programs. This is a planning document for the, by the way, this is the picture of our Heritage Park. It looks pretty, so. And this will be the five-year program from fiscal year 2011, 2012 through 2015 to 2016. The CIP is, is a planning document for a short range, short-term and midterm funding, basic, a planning document for the, for that we can use in, in preparing for capital improvement in terms of street, water, sewer, storm drain, and so forth. The only item that budget for next fiscal year is, is of year one, which is the 2011, 2012 fiscal year. The remaining four year is just a planning document that doesn't have any dollar, dollar amount budget to it. Okay? We broke this capital improvement program into seven major category. First is the fleet, which has to do with vehicle replacement. Second is general building. They have to do with building a new facility or improving existing facility. The money for, the funding for this, this project can come from the federal fund, CDBG, state funding, and general fund. Also, we have park and recreation category that, for the park improvement project, like building a new park, playground equipment, planting trees, rubber ice play surface. Again, the money can come from the park construction fee, CDBG. In the past, we have a park bond money that we used in the past, but that bonding is already expired. We also have a sewer project that, to replace the existing sewer facility, build a, a new sewer system, and the money come from the sewer enterprise fund and the sewer connection fee. Storm drain project is the, when the city have to put in a new storm drain, drain based on the comprehensive storm drain master plan, and the money for this is usually come from the development fee and storm drain capital fund. Street and street light, again, this is pretty straightforward. We, for pavement rehabilitation, build a new street and, and put in new street light. Like tonight, the, the city council just approved for me to use the grant money to purchase the, the street light, light bulb, so the city staff can, to install that. Water, this is to replace the, the aging pipeline, put in a new pipeline, and the funding for this can come from the, the water enterprise fund and the water capital acquisition fund. And this is the list of potential funding source. In your package, I gave you a booklet that have a detailed explanation of all these funding source. I can go over very fast, just to give you some description. For example, AB 2928, the state approved that a couple of years ago. We used that funding to do a pavement rehabilitation of Lawton and some of the street improvement. CDBG is the, is a federal HUD grant that the, federal gave it to the state, the state gave it to the county, and the county gives them to the city. A county fund donation, air quality program, CMAC, we use that in the past. Fire equipment capital fund, fire facility fund, measure I, which is a half cent sale tax. They separate that between the, the regional and, and the local fund. Hazard elimination safety program that is a state grant program. In the past, I applied for that, and we received the, the funding. We use that to install the traffic signal at Redlands and Richardson. Highway bridge rehabilitation replacement fund. We also have, applied for that grant, and we use that grant for Mountain View Bridge widening project. And this is 80/20. That's mean the federal gave us 80% and the city had to come up with the 20% local match. Joint Power Authority Bond Fund, Land and Water Conservation Fund, and we, this is really a grant, land and water conservation grant. We received that before, for a landscape project. Landscape Assessment District, lease purchase, financing, park development fee, RDA, revenue bond, which is the, is RDA bond that we issued in the past. Save Route to School is a grant that we just received a couple of months ago, and the city council award contract to install curb and gutter and sidewalk for proposed mission school. The Section 130 is for a great crossing. We don't have it here, but we, when it was with the city of San Bernardino, we used that grant to fund the, the overpass at Hunts Lane that eventually will get built any time I know when. But, but that's Section 130, federal aid fund. AB 1266, we never used that before. Sewer capital fund, sewer enterprise fund, state gas, gasoline tax, infrastructure bank loan. Again, we never use the loan because we have a tendency to use our money first. Street light assessment, or storm drain, capital fund, street light assessment district, T-21, we use that in the past, but I think we've pretty much run out of that money. Traffic system fee, TDA is, is managed by Sandback, and sometime they gave us some, some TDA money. Underground utility district, which is the, the money that collect by Edison from the, the customer. And the last project we used that was for the underground utility on Redlands Boulevard. And urban park and recreation, again, that's just a grant funding, water- And urban park and recreation, again, that's just a grant funding, water capital fund, water enterprise fund. We use that for putting a new water main or repair the water main, and of course, the RDA. So, sewer. I have been with the city 10 years now, and I'm very proud that we have replaced a lot of sewer in the city and repair the old sewer line within the city and put in a new sewer main. The last main that we put in was along Redland, oh, I'm sorry, along Redlands Boulevard. That was the last major project that we did. For next fiscal year, we plan to do sewer lining at the part of Redlands Boulevard and part of university. 10-11, oh, right here, a little bit over here. What happened in those area is the pipe of oil, it have a crack, so we go in with a, it looked like a sock. You slip that through the existing pipe, and then with cure, it turned hard, just like a plastic pipe. So we plan to do that for next fiscal year. We budget about $100,000 for next fiscal year for that. And then for next, the following fiscal year, we have to enlarge the pipe or do a pipe bursting along the, the line along here, which is going to go out toward our outfall to the city of San Bernardino. This is the location.
Can you explain pipe bursting?
You have that special medical term. What we do is we have an existing eight-inch pipe.
Angioplasty.
Yeah. We have existing eight-inch pipe, and we put in a steel, a solid steel, like a bullet, where we push through existing pipe and break it out, and right behind it is a plastic pipe that follow through and replace existing pipe and increase it from eight to 12. This fiscal year, we completed this section over here, and, and because this is part of the I-10 typical interchange improvement, so we went ahead and did that. So, and it worked very good. We didn't have to cut up the street other than at the manhole, and it's worked great and saved a lot of money for the pavement rehabilitation afterward. Next is storm drain. For next fiscal year, during this flood damage on December of last year, we have a major storm drain that come out at Benton Street right here, from Barton Road up Benton, and it's kind of come out through the open ditch behind the Dueson Center and come out across the railroad track and come through here. Well, with the mud and debris, it's pretty much clogged up this open channel and undermined the railroad track. So we have planned, designed last year to do a jack and bore the pipe underneath the railroad track and come out through here and tie to the existing San Mateo Channel right here. When the county did the channel, about 10 years now, we went ahead and did the inlet at that location. It's built as part of the channel, so all you have to do is connect to it. And for the next fiscal year, if you have money, then we would like to extend the existing storm drain again at Benton, go south on Benton to Lawton, and go east on Lawton to the low spot right here, that you remember we have mud. By Willaber. Yes, we have a mud and debris at that location. So we can do that in the future. Yes, sir?
Any question? When we had the December storms.
Yes.
One of the most significant backups, I think, was on Mountain View right at the overpass.
Yes.
Is, I'm assuming there's a storm drain issue there that needs to be addressed?
Yes, we have existing storm drain there that go along the county flood control channel. What happening is, is a pipe that go underneath the railroad is too small. We need to enlarge that, and we can.
And is that on, on the agenda for a future?
For future years, yes. Yes.
Because that was a fairly significant problem, as I understand it.
It's actually worse over here.
Okay.
Yes. But the thing is, you don't see it because it's behind.
There's no traffic over there.
Correct. Correct.
So in that case, why would, why would the end of the north side of Benton be a higher priority than a major thoroughfare like Mountain View?
Because the majority of this area right here drained that direction.
Okay.
So, so without doing this, it can undermine the railroad track, and then we can have another major derailing and so forth.
So is your point that the prior drainage is currently plugged, and it needs to be unplugged to go back to its original state?
This.
Whereas Mountain View was not big enough, but it's still the same as it was before.
Right.
It's not worse than it was before.
Correct.
Okay. So it's repair as opposed to advance? Correct.
Yes. And right now, at the last city council meeting on the May 10, the council did approve, awarded a contract to just remove the debris from this open channel. So.
And that's subject to FEMA?
Yes.
Reimbursement.
Yes. And what's so nice about it, because we have been working with the railroad, the railroad just happened to be working on the track, so we took the opportunity to work alongside the railroad, so this way we don't have to pay for the flacking. So we save quite a bit of money by doing so.
Yeah. We also had a major issue up on, I think it was Almond?
Yes, but that was private.
That's private property.
Yes, we went over that last week.
That's why it's not part of the plan.
Correct. We went over that at the last meeting. Next is the street improvement. Again, I'm very proud that during the past 10 years, I already paved every street in town. And for next year, what we plan to do is using the Measure I, we receive about $250,000 a year from Sandback as part of Measure I. And next year, we plan to do a sewer seal, Mountain View from Barton, a little bit here, and Van Louven all the way to the freeway, and also Redlands Boulevard from Mountain View all the way to California Street, and Beaumont Avenue from Mountain View all the way to the railroad track right here. But the section on the south side of Beaumont Avenue from Whittier and the railroad track that is within the county. So I've been talking to them, and they're willing to, to work with us where we manage the project and they reimburse us for it. So they say yes for that.
Just again to comment, traveling through our surrounding neighborhoods, without question, Loma Linda has the best landscaping and the best streets of any city in our inland empire. And I appreciate that.
Thank you, and I plan to keep it that way. Now, what happening is, the reason I plan to do this, Red, Mountain View, I'm not planning to do it right away because the county, county flood control is going out to bid to remove the dirt and debris from the San Mateo Channel. And the trucking had to come out at two locations, one at Barton Road and another one at Mountain View right here. So it's half a million cubic yard of dirt that had to come out of the channel. And for us, we have three debris basin that we have to do the same thing. The project is going out to bid this week, bid opening June the 21st, award the contract on June the 24th, and we'll use the same roadway. So my goal is, after we complete with the dirt hauling, we will come back and sewer seal the street, make it nice and black, and re-stripe. So that will be done next fiscal year, but after all the dirt and debris project is completed. Okay?
And as you know, my dream is to do the same thing with the on-ramps and off-ramps at some point.
I have that. As a matter of fact, it's right here, sir. Next fiscal year, I also budget, part because RDA money, as a seeding money for $200,000 to do the on-ramp and off-ramp at Mountain View. A start. And then we have the Anderson Bridge seismic retrofit that we have been working with Caltrans for the past, I don't know, eight years. As soon as they approve, I will start construction next fiscal year. We also have been working with the university on widening the university from campus, I misspelled it, from campus to Anderson, which the city will contribute $2 million, and university come up with a different, and that's include the pedestrian bridge. All right, and the sewer seal project's right here. Stewart Street, I'm sorry. What did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Stewart Street, from, from campus to Anderson. We also going to put in sidewalk, repair sidewalk as where's location. We usually budget that every year for, for putting new trap, putting new sidewalk or sidewalk repaired every year. And Redlands Boulevard install sidewalk and landscaping. This is to use the CDBG money to put in a sidewalk along the north side of Redlands Boulevard between Curtis, which is the mobile home park right here, to Richardson. The bus stop is about right here, just west of Richardson, and there's no sidewalk for people that live at a mobile home to get access to the bus stop. So I apply to the county CDBG. They say okay, so that was we can spend the money on for sidewalk for next fiscal year. Any questions so far? And then what happening is, this is, I give you a number of year, the year that I spend rehab the street, and sewer seal project, we usually do it every five or seven years. So every seven year cycle, I would do it again. So. And for example, Mountain View, this will be my second time that I do it. But the first time was a major rehab where we grind existing pavement, put in a new rubberized surface, and it's been eight years already. So now for time to do a sewer seal. Yes, sir?
Has your experience with a rubberized surface been that it cracks less than standard?
Yes, sir. Yes, it's cracked less due to, what's the word you use? Because what happened is rubber, when it's elasticity, that's it. The, with the rubber, when this, during the summertime, it's heat up, it gets soft, and, and it's shrinking, and it's not shrinking as much. It doesn't turn hard like conventional asphalt. And it stay dog a little longer, it's quieter than a conventional asphalt.
And if anybody doubts it, run up and down Barton Road, it's very quiet.
Yes.
It's the same surface. Yeah, something.
And, and sometime we use, we get a grant for using recycled asphalt, so we did that for section of Barton Road. We get a grant for that. Okay, next, water. Again, look at all the, the water main that I replaced, I put in a new one. I have done a lot. But for next fiscal year, we plan to replace the old pipe on Park Avenue, Coloma, Park, Cottage, Lilac, and Coloma, and replace it, replace the six inch with eight inch pipe.
I was just thinking, you've been really busy the last 10 years. It's too bad he didn't tell us all this stuff before we negotiated his contract.
Well, the thing is, I ran out of money now, so it's not much to do for next year.
Are they having pressure problems on those Park Avenue?
No, so it's just old. If you remember about, it's three, three, four months ago.
Where's Dick?
We have major leak at the intersection of Park and Coloma, major sinkhole, and a van went inside of, because she went around the barricade, and yeah, so. So it's time to replace that pipeline. So. Any questions so far? And then also, we plan to replace the, the water meters. We've been doing it every years, but next year we could be doing a little bit more. So as you can see, we like to replace the meter, we like to replace the water valves. That's something that we like to do every year, just to keep them updated. Okay? General building, this fiscal year, we did the design and installed the parking cover at the city yard. So next fiscal year, we have money budget for installing the solar panel at that parking structure, parking cover at the city yard. Sim, will be similar to what we have here at the city hall. And this fiscal year, we just award the contract to upgrade the fire alarm system in this building for phase one and two. So later on, we will finish the phase three and four at a later date. And.
A question on the, on the solar. Can you give me some sense of, when we put solar up, we get credit for the electricity that that generates that reduces our electrical bill?
Yes.
And, and do we, what does the net like that look like? The net on that, I should say?
I have it in the report in the past. I have to dig it up again. I can't remember.
So is there a net positive? In other words, do we generate enough solar electricity to more than offset our bill?
No, sir.
But it reduces it significantly?
Correct. Our biggest bill for electricity is, we have wells and pumps to pump the water up from the ground up, up to the reservoir. That's our most uses for electricity.
Do we have some sense for what the amortization period on that is?
Yes, for, Conrad's not here. When we did the, the parking lot here, I think it was 15 years for, for the parking lot.
Thank you.
I'm waiting for it to come down and the price to go down cheaper, so I can do the solar panel in my house, but it's not quite there yet.
That's not part of this budget, though?
No, 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 no. But I've been keeping an eye on it, so. And for fleet, next fiscal year, we just plan to purchase one car. And, but again, it's important that we, we keep in mind that we have to have a vehicle replacement program to replace vehicle for Public Works, for the fire department, and so forth. So it's a, it's a good planning tool to do all of that. Oops, sorry. That's it. Any question?
Simple question. What, what's the cycle we're on with that, in terms of vehicle replacement?
I would like to do it more often, but due to the budget, it's kind of hard to, like the fire department, they have pretty good vehicle replacement program.
Can you, can you add to that, Jeff?
Run engines front line first half 12 years, and then they move another eight years to reserve status here, so try to get 20 years out of our apparatus.
That's pretty good. That's pretty good.
And then when we're done, someone else uses it. So if we were really desperate, we could go longer. Yeah, we have museum. We run them in the parade for 100 years.
Jar, I had a question. This five-year plan is depend upon getting a number of funding from various sources.
Yes.
That you outlined. So if we do not have those sources, then some of these projects do not get done?
Correct. It's just moved to further years, that's all.
And looking back, five years ago.
Yes.
When you submitted this plan to us, do you happen to know if any of the projects were not able to be done because we couldn't get the funding?
I'm in trouble because I spend more money, like the mayor said, I like to spend money on asphalt. And, and this past five years, we have been pretty much meet our, our projected, or sometimes sooner than our five years. For the next five year, I'm not quite that confident due to the, due to the budget. So. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go to item number 17. This is an item that I'm really fond of. I don't like speed traps, and we've had a little bit of a borderline speed trap over the years, in my opinion, and that's the Mountain View Bridge. Because of, ostensibly because of limited sightlines, we've had a speed limit five miles per hour lower than the street north and south of it. So this is council bill O-2011-08, a first reading, setting a public hearing for June 14, establishing a 40 mile per hour speed limit over the Mountain View Bridge. Wow. Public Works has no comment.
And again, the reason was 35 before because of the bottleneck. And now that the bridge are widened, we did the speed survey, and I can, we can raise that to the 40 miles an hour. So now the speed limit will be consistent from, from Lawton all the way to the freeway.
But I prefer to say it was because of sightlines, because at least that made some sense. If you slow down the speed limit at a bottleneck, you actually can make the bottleneck worse, but I guess it depends on whether there's an accident or.
Because in the past, at Prospect, we have a traffic from Prospect all the way up, especially in the evening when people going home, almost to the bridge. And then when you go up to the hill, the high point, and you go too fast, you just hit the car that parked right below you. So, and that's the reason why.
Okay, this doesn't require a public hearing today. We're going to set it for next time. Is there any comment, any questions, any doubts that this is a good thing? Any comments from the public safety? Okay. And I'm sure you never use it as a speed trap. Absolutely not. Good. Absolutely not, good. It's really hard.
Just to let you know, I'm also working on Beaumont Avenue, but because the section of Beaumont, again, from Brenmore to the railroad track on the south side, it belongs to the county. So I have been working with the county right now to, we already did the speed survey, but I have to get the agreement from them. So as soon as they agree, I will bring it back to traffic advisory committee and then to you.
And that was in response to a citizen complaint, concern, yeah?
May I ask you a question about that? And I think I have the answer to my own question, but just to affirm that, I've had multiple people, not necessarily Loma Linda citizens, that complain about the railroad overpass there. That's county territory, that's not city. Is that correct?
At the same time, it's also the railroad.
Yeah.
We worked with them to actually fix it once already, and I keep asking them to do a better job, but that's the best they can do.
So I had one guy that tried to give me a bill because he was crossing too fast, and it is an awkward angle that you approach the tracks from there. But it's not a city issue.
No, sir.
It is a Santa Fe issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No, it's Union Pacific.
Okay, is there any further comment, or is there a motion to, do we approve that this is the first reading and set a public hearing for June 14 for the council bill? Any question?
Can we make a motion that we set it and not, and waive the entire reading? Is that how we do that?
That's next time.
Next time, oh.
We just set the public hearing for June 14, at which point we will waive the reading of the entire bill.
What he said.
Is there a second? Okay, any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved. Are there any reports of councilmen? Hearing none. Oh, I heard a click.
I just want to comment on an email I received from a citizen here in town who had an idea about a street improvement, adopt a street program. And that email was forwarded along, and our city staff are looking into it, just to make sure there are no issues as far as legality and things like that. So to that citizen, I thought it was a pretty neat idea, and I'm sure it'll probably come up again once staff evaluates that and presents an opinion to us.
Okay, are there any reports of officers? Hearing none, the city council is adjourned.
We'll go ahead and reconvene the RDA. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
We've got an oral participation of any member in the public who wish to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on. There are no conflicts of interest?
I move the minutes.
I guess, before we get to the minutes, we do point out that item number one was already taken care of during the council meeting. The mayor isn't eager to finish this meeting. We'll move on to item number two, which is the minutes for the April 12th and 26th meeting. I see, I hear a motion. Do I hear a second? Dr. Daley has seconded it. Hearing no, opposition so passed. Then we move on to item number three, council bill R-20011. I'm sorry? 2011-08.
There's a one zero in it, yeah.
Pertain to acquisition of 25438 Sonora Loop from the Federal National Home Loan Corporation. Madam Secretary.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, this home is also one within the Parkside Development. It was, it is owned by the bank. In December of last year, you gave me authorization to make an offer, and I stuck to that offer. They have finally accepted it. And in the meantime, they have made some improvements to the home, but we do purchase as is, as an agency. So with your approval, then we can move forward with the closure of this transaction and hopefully get another first-time home buyer into the home. We'd expect to close by the end of June.
I move it.
Do we hear any opposition? Have hearing none, we'll move the item, council bill R-2011-08, it's so passed. Item number four, request exceed program limits related to rehabilitation of a mobile home at 24414 University Avenue. Madam Secretary.
The redevelopment agency has several rehabilitation programs. One of them is a grant program for mobile home owners. And it is a grant because there is not land that we can tie to the rehabilitation for a deed of trust. The repairs that are needed for this mobile home are considered health, safety items. One of them, the participant is elderly. There is a wheelchair lift that is needed because according to HCD regulations, there is not enough slope or area to provide a slope for a ramp. That is one of the major expenses. But there was a gas leak, and there are other electrical problems which would exceed my authority. So I am asking for an additional $2,000 in order to make these improvements for this program participant, so she has a healthy and safe place to live.
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Hearing a motion to approve and hearing no opposition, it is so carried. I heard any other reports from anyone else? Hearing none, we are adjourned.